I'm going to go ahead and call the board meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
Time's 6:34 Griffin. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to adopting tonight's agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
Madam President.
Gina.
I move that tonight's agenda be adopted as printed and placed on file.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately? Seeing none?
Madam President.
Amy.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. We've reached our first public commentary. The public commentary is for agenda items only. Is there any public commentary? All right, I'll move on, seeing no one running towards the mic. We'll move into board correspondence, Griffin.
I think all we had was, hold on, I lost it. An invitation for the CTE advisory meeting, which is semi-annual. They're having the fall one on October 9th at the high school. And they'll have another one usually like in March or April. But you should all have that email.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our Board of Education reports. Amy Bissell is excused from the Bedford Township Government. Dr. Schultz, is there anything you would like?
No, just that depending how this evening goes, we may be attending their next meeting to ask them for additional partnerships.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our Bedford Township Park Board, Griffin.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. The Michigan Association of School Boards, Megan.
Nothing to report.
Policy Committee.
We still need to hold a meeting here this fall sometime, so probably now, the school's beginning, I would say in the next month or so, we can get together.
Okay. We'll move on to the Monroe County Association of Board of Education, Amy.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. And we have a student representative here, I believe, okay, here you are. Sophia Johnson, welcome.
Hello, Board members. It was a busy four weeks of school with a pep rally, a big ball game between seniors and juniors, and homecoming, which showed great results with almost 900 students attending. In the weeks to come, we will begin preparing for trunk or treat and our first blood drive of the year.
Yeah. Who won the, thank you, who won the big ball?
Seniors.
Seniors, of course, yes, awesome. Thank you so much Sophia. And you're welcome, you don't have to stay if you wanted to go, you're welcome to go, you don't have to stay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Schultz?
Yes, good evening everyone. Our first item under my name is for consideration to approve an agreement with the Monroe County Sheriff's Office for two additional school resource officers. I'd like to give you guys a little background. This is in my eighth year now, I think every year we meet with the Sheriff's Office, and we talk about our resources availability. And routinely I ask for any additional resource officers, but much like education, it is a tough field to fill our spots right now. This year, I had the opportunity to meet with Sheriff Goodenough and his leadership team, and we had a great conversation about where the department's going, also where the district would like to be. And it was agreed upon that we believe we can move forward and actually add two resource officers to the district. That would look different than we currently have. What it would look like is two additional officers for elementary level only. So we would have one elementary SRO to cover each building. It wouldn't be the same SRO every day because we do have a dare instructor and he rotates around, so we would make sure everyone has an officer there each daily, each day. They could also, while they're focused on each building, could do traffic enforcement around that area, both in the day and at the beginning and end of each school day. It adds, it would be our fifth resource officer, or our fourth resource officer, we have them. We'd have one on the secondary campus for both buildings, so we'd have one on every single campus each day. We've seen the news, we've heard the, we've read my emails about what's taking place. This adds another layer of security and resources for our staff members and our students and our families to feel more comfortable with. But it also is another way to build relationships with our families and to, you know, further that partnership that we have with the township. We have two different officer partnerships now. The first one that we have with our first liaison officer is a 66-33% split essentially. We pay the majority of that split because of the time that we have. And our second partnership is actually a three-way split between the township, the district, and the county with Sheriff's Office. That is a 33% each. So, and that, and the way that one works is when we're not in school, then the deputy, this time it's Deputy Bills, goes out into the community, he works the road, he does special assignments, but there's another presence then in the township. So, our plan is to hopefully approve this on our end tonight, and I'll make it very clear, I'd like to approve either way. If the township wants to do a partnership again, that would be great. I can see a lot of added value for the roads and the community. If they are not able to, then I'd like to still go it alone and follow in the same 66-33% we have now. And we would really set ourselves up to be, we'd be the only district in this area that has somebody on every single campus. So once again, you know, setting the bar for what school should be doing.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the agreement with Monroe County Sheriff's Office for two additional school resource officers?
Madam President.
Amy.
Consider, I move, I'm looking at the long paper, hold on. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Monroe County Sheriff's Office for two additional school resource officers as recommended.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
If I may, Megan?
No, I just.
Oh, if I may, so our plan would be to, if approved this evening by our board, we would need to still go to the township board and ask for a partnership, as well as to the county board, to talk a little bit more about what this might look like. We do have the Sheriff of Monroe County, Mr. Troy Goodenough here, and he'd love to say a few words and talk about our partnership.
Well, thank you Dr. Schultz and Board, for those that you don't know me, I'm Troy Goodenough, I'm your sheriff. I will tell you, since being elected sheriff, our top goal at the Sheriff's Office is student safety. I think if you follow any information that's come out from my office, and during my campaign, that was my goal and objective. And I'm proud to say that we now have at least one SRO in every school district in Monroe County. Dundee covers Dundee Schools, the Dundee Police Department. And we continue to bolster that. We truly believe, I truly believe, that if our students and our family members and our staff don't feel safe in that school building or in that school seat, they're not going to get a good education. And if we look down the road at our future, we're in trouble if we don't get our students that opportunity. And we do that by putting law enforcement in there. And I want to make it clear, we call them school resource officers outside of Monroe County. I call them SROs, meaning school relationship officers. We want them deputies to build relationships with the students, the staff, and the families. We want the students to feel comfortable coming up to that deputy and talking about things that are going on, whether it's vaping, whether it's school threats, or anything that they can help with. And, and we're not going to waver on our commitment to doing that in Monroe County. And we do appreciate Dr. Schultz and his team and the board for considering this. We think it's a win-win. And as he, as he mentioned, our goal is, we would have an officer in uniform when the students arrive for school, at dismissal when they're leaving for the day, and maybe in between the day to make a presence known during lunch and walk the halls. And again, building those relationships, showing that positive side of law enforcement. I don't have to tell you, look across the country, and you see the view of law enforcement in the public eye. It's my job as your sheriff to change that narrative. And we do that by being in schools, engaging with children. And I don't want to go too far off, but one of the things that we started two years ago is a mentoring program that we do during the summer. And we identify a group of students or individuals that are maybe struggling. I use the word less likely to succeed. And in the summer months, those resource officers pay a visit to those students throughout the week. We take them fishing, they take them to the Toledo Zoo, kayaking, different activities, the Toledo Mud Hens. The success of that is phenomenal. We had two students who had a grade point average of less than one that graduate, or that the following year were on the honor roll. To me, that is success. And you can't put a dollar value. And I always tell Dr. Schultz and school officials, your job is to educate, my job is to protect, but we had to do this in a partnership. And I understand it becomes a challenge, and it's tough when you sit here tonight and go, well, the sheriff hasn't given us a figure. You're right, I haven't. We're in contract negotiations, we're hoping them get tightened up, and we can give you a solid figure of what that looks like. But I truly believe, we continue to invest in that, we are going to be the leaders in this country to set the tone. And this is a hybrid idea, that we partner with not only the county, the Sheriff's Office, but the township, and we do. They're strictly traffic enforcement, they're not going to handle calls for service in the township. They will handle calls for service at the schools, but what is it again? We slow them motors down that are traveling in and around our schools, and it's another layer of protection for our children.
Awesome, thank you.
Any questions you may have?
We have to put a motion on the floor first, but yeah. Oh, we did, oh gosh, sorry, that's right. Yes, yes, I should have remembered, okay. Are there any questions for either Dr. Schultz or Sheriff?
I have one. So if we're, if we end up not partnering with the township, then what does the, what do the deputies do when school's not in session?
So.
Yeah, go ahead. So, it'd be, it'd be the same as what Deputy Lustak does now. He does special projects for the county. This year I saw him hanging off the side of the road on a vehicle trying to fill it with gas during traffic. I'm not joking. They, but they also, both officers did come and work in our summer program this year. They worked with students, they were here. I know that, you know, they are still available to students and staff, but, you know, we have 180 days of school, plus they come for training and they do a lot of other work here. But when they're not with us, they would be, you know, they also get their time off. And our officers are excellent about taking time off when kids are not in session, so that helps tremendously. But it would, it would be focused on our area when they're here and during school days, and then when that, when that's not happening, whatever, I guess whatever's going on in the county.
And rest assured, again, as Dr. Schultz said, the split is, if we just go, let's just say hypothetically, the two of us, is 66-33. And they break that down, the 66% is the amount of time they're spent in their school, the 33% is the time outside of school, which is our time. But that officer's assigned to Bedford Township, unless it's an emergency or a crisis where they have to be pulled out of Bedford Township, that would be the only case. But we work diligently to keep them here, and again, I want to see that mentoring program build and expand so that we can keep that engagement.
In addition to this partnership, I've also asked Sheriff Goodenough to look into, write our signs to add. As you know, we have a couple that are down right now, and we have to replace them regardless, so we have this, we've had this conversation number, number of times. I believe Dr. French has carved out some funding out of our 31AA or our ability, our available safety funds to pay for those, so he's gotten me one quote, and I'm also, I request a couple quotes, so that'll go along with the traffic. Because as one of our, two of our principals at the elementary are here, drop off and pickup are tough. I mean, we actually bus students across the road, literally just across the street, so they don't get hit on Jackman. We've had, you know, we've done this here, and we talked about it ad nauseam, so having, having somebody there in every building every day, that would be a huge help for our administration, our staff, and our parents who are worried about either walking their students across the street or even getting out of the park, you know, getting out of the parking lot when it, you know, when it's just that busy. And if you're on construction and all the other things going around, it makes it tougher. We have grant funds that we can pay for a portion of these, these officers. You'll see in my update this week that the legislature did pass a supplemental budget for safety and security last night. We should be getting around $130,000 for that, as in addition to what they already had put in the budget. So, majority of these additions, regardless of how they are funded, would come from those safety funds. So we do have some support that would cover a good chunk of that.
Go ahead, Griffin.
I would just say, we've had great resource officers here in Bedford. I think here in Bedford, we're very supportive of law enforcement. We have the millage that we pass every time it comes up. And a couple of years, you might, Lisa and Dee might remember, we had a, before the bond, we had that safety survey that was sent out. And I wasn't on the board, but I remember sitting in the meetings and listening to the results. And I, one of the questions was, do you feel safer with a uniformed officer in the schools? And I think it was like 89% or something like that said yes. So I don't think it would, we would be hurting anything to do this. It would be a great help, and I would be very surprised if the township said no, at risk of being thrown under the bus. I wouldn't have any problem doing it.
Are you teeing them up?
Oh yeah. Like, we're, I, we're going to vote, but I don't see it failing. So yeah, it's going to be in their court now to finish it up.
There have been some informal conversations with a couple members of the township board, and like Sheriff Goodenough said, Bedford's very, having our own substation, they have their own separate contract. Those officers stay in here in town, there's a lot of value to that. So I think there's, I think there's definitely support to move forward. So I'm looking forward to that conversation and attending their meeting as soon as we can wrap up our side. But I've been in education 20, my 27th year, I've never worked with the sheriff or prosecuting office that has done what ours have done. We have met, we meet constantly. We had an issue on Saturday evening, I got a call during a wedding, I think, I believe, from our sheriff and the prosecutor, talking about our issue, making sure we have the resources that we felt comfortable with, giving me updates. You don't get that in other places, I'll just be honest. I've been in Macomb County, I've been in Wayne County, and I've been in Washington. There is nothing like the relationship we have currently, and, I mean, we're very lucky, and for them to even go on a limb and try to, I think this is, this requires hiring additional officers. It's not just like they have officers waiting to jump in. They're going to do recruiting, they're going to go and put more officers through the academy, you know, and maybe we'll get some of our great students to really get involved and want to do that themselves.
Awesome, anything else?
I have one more point of clarification, and I think it's probably just a matter of the way the sheriff worded it. But they will be on our campus all day or just at arrival and dismissal?
They will be, they will be at arrival and, they will be at arrival and exit every day, is the way we talked about it. They would be in the buildings each day, and they would also be out doing strictly traffic enforcement around that area. So supporting our elementary buildings and the area that they surround. I, it's a little different between the high school and elementary with what the liaison officers will do during the day. So having them go step out and take care of some of the traffic issues, focus on that area, would be a bonus for us.
All right, well, thank you so much, appreciate you coming, Sheriff.
Thank you, I had a good time.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, if there's no other discussion, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell is excused, Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Thank you, Dee?
Yes.
Thank you, Megan?
Yes.
Thank you, Gina?
Yes.
Thank you, Griffin?
Yes.
Thank you, and the chair votes yes, the motion carries, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on to our financial items, and Chrissy?
I have one evening, one item for the board this evening, and that is the donation from Students for Other Students. This is a program that's run at Jackman Road Elementary for at least the last 10 years. They hire high school students to come tutor the elementary students. This year's donation is $7,500. They had a little bit of funds left over from last year's program, which will give them about $9,000 for this year, which means they can provide over 650 hours of tutoring support to the students at Jackman Road.
Awesome, thank you. All right, can I get a consideration to accept the donation from the Students for Other Students, SOS, as recommended? Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion? Okay, just an awesome program, I'm so glad you, we continue to see it every year, appreciate that. All right, this is a roll call vote, Amy Bissell is excused, Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries, thank you. And it looks like we have a couple instructional items.
Thank you, thank you Madam President. Our first item is the consideration to approve the Chrome Boxes and Classroom Chargers. Chrome Boxes were, have been placed in classrooms as a backup for many years, and this was a time to refresh those. And as you can see in the memo, the approach is different based on the grade level and what was needed now. So, that's the proposal before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the purchase of the Chrome Boxes and Classroom Chargers?
Madam President.
Griffin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Chrome Boxes and Classroom Chargers as recommended.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote, Amy is excused, Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries, thank you.
Our second item, it's my pleasure to have tonight here our principal and assistant principal from Jackman Road Elementary, Mrs. Sherry Farnin and Ms. Kim Ortiz, to tell you about our summer school program and update you on that. Welcome.
Thank you. Sherry, will you make sure that mic is on?
I don't need a mic. Do you want us to use this?
They won't hear you.
Yeah, okay.
It speaks into the speakers at home, so.
Oh, great.
Well, first of all, thank you very kindly for inviting us here to share about our summer school program. Sherry and I have done it for the last two years. It's been our honor and our pleasure to, to be a part of that and to see our amazing kids and what we've been able to do with it. So we'd like to start by showing you that it's involving our K-5. The wonderful thing about it is it combines all three elementaries. So as we're doing this, since we're principals, we got to do our homeschool, isn't that great? So we are at Jackman Road, we ran from July 8th through August 8th. It's a five-week program. So we have our kids Monday through Thursday from 8:30 to 11:30. So we do some English Language Arts, we did some math, and then just a little bit of a brain break, a little bit of recess. The great thing about it too is we were able to provide transportation, so parents did not have to worry about the drop-off and pick-up unless they chose to. And of course, snack is the most important part of any kid's day, so of course we have snack.
So of course, we've been, we, this is our second year. Mr. Chapman handed it off from us after doing it several years as well. But this year, when the sheriff reached out and talked about the community outreach in the summer for the kids, we asked if he could come with us, we have over 130 kids every day. And so the sheriff and Dr. Schultz, everybody worked with us. And so we were able to have him every week but the Monroe County Fair Week, and we really missed him that week. So we were able to add Deputy Bills, also our teaching staff has grown each year. I think this year we had 31 teachers. And we've added our paraprofessional staff, and then Mrs. Byrne is our secretary. So we have a great staff. We had 17, we did at-risk students, so students who just needed a little extra help in the summer, so they didn't have summer learning loss. And last year, we were able to add an enrichment portion to the program. So this year, we had 17 classrooms, K-5, and three multi-age enrichment classrooms. We had 138 students from all three buildings. And the great part about that was about the third day, we were just our own little school. Again, everybody gelled, the staff, and it was a lot of fun. So it speaks volumes for Bedford and what we do as a team. Our class sizes were four to eight students, we had around 84% in attendance each day, and most of the students who were absent had predetermined, hey, we have a camping trip, we have a vacation. So we really didn't have any like surprise absences or anything that weren't accounted for prior to the program beginning. So of course, our mission and goals, providing learning opportunities to students in small groups with targeted intervention in English Language Arts and Math to at-risk BPS elementary students to improve achievement. We also wanted to provide learning opportunities to students in small groups to provide enrichment opportunities that include core knowledge across all subject areas. Utilized hands-on and teacher-directed activities to drive all of our instruction, and we wanted to provide a safe and academic-focused environment. One of the big things is just to reduce the summer slide. I know as a parent, I was not doing what I should, I'll be honest. So we had a lot of fun, but this kind of guarantees that your kids are getting just that little extra. And of course, for all the programs, we wanted to increase core knowledge across all subject areas for everyone.
So as you can see, learning at a glance, it was busy and it was fun. Of course, Minnie Mule had to, to make a little lookout and come and meet the kids, and Gaga Ball is always the best thing to do in the summer. Right there, you see what we called our Summer Learning Adventure Enrichment. So Sherry and I put that together last year. So what we were looking for is what about those kiddos that we need to take a little bit further? And we want to extend them. So we opened it up, and we had the slots, and we did that, and we were so blessed this year to have three of our amazing teachers. We had a music teacher, we had an art teacher, and we had an exploratory teacher who worked together. So this year, every week, they took a different culture, and they learned about that culture in music and in art, and enrichment was really fun. We have a community garden that our kids plant, and so the, the teacher who did it happens to have a, what's her degree?
Her first career was culinary.
Yeah, there you go, she has a culinary degree. So the kids got to actually take the vegetables, and they cooked, and they cleaned, and they learned to chop, and they measured, and they put all the recipes together, and then they got to eat and put on their music and all their, their extra pieces. It was really fun to watch them, they had a blast. Deputy Bills came out, and, well, he was there every day actually, but he put a whole presentation together for our kiddos regarding water safety. You can go ahead, and next one, and then he did another one, this one was really fun, partnered with the fire department, and they came out with their ambulances and the fire trucks. And the kids got to actually spray the hose, they were surprised how, how heavy it was. They got to get into an ambulance and see how it wasn't so scary. They talked to them about not hiding if there is a fire, that they are there to help. They put the whole gear on, and they did all that with the kids. So they spent some time doing that. And then the last thing, special program he did with them, he worked on team building with our four and, fourth and fifth graders. He brought them out back, they had to work together to solve some problems because as we know as adults, if we can't communicate and we can't work together to solve problems, life's tough. So he spent a couple, couple sessions with them, working on those skills.
So when we started looking, we're always digging into data as educators, as a district, as professional learning communities. And this program is one piece of our professional learning communities. We're committed to the never-ending process in which educators commit to working together to ensure high levels of learning for everyone. This goes right along with quality classroom educators who are all highly qualified, after-school tutoring programs, the title program with student intervention providers, promised standard time and support staff. So it's truly a group effort, so this Summer Learning Adventure really is an important piece for this. We're very tight about working in collective teams with collective responsibility for every single student learning in our district. We looked at all different kinds of information and data, but we just want to give everyone a big view of how well Bedford Public Schools is doing in the county. Also, what we're doing as buildings, we're meeting with teams and looking at what grade level a big view of how well Bedford Public Schools is doing in the county. Also, what we're doing as buildings, we're meeting with teams and looking at what grade levels below us, above us are doing, what the junior high is doing, what high school is doing. So Mr. Sanderson, if you want to kind of go through just the M-step, and I'm assuming this will be made public, so if people want to take a closer look?
So this is so encouraging. We have been on this, on this road to travel to improve all student learning, and it's really, really exciting to see that the process is working and we are coming through. Our M-step scores are really growing. We have a ways to go. We're not perfect by any means. We still have work to do, but the work we're doing is the right work, and our scores in our M-step are really showing. I'm very, very proud of all the students and all the work that they're doing, as well as the staff working collaboratively to make sure that the students' needs are in the middle. They're what's important.
And that's about it. We're just hoping that the program continues to be funded every summer and to continue to determine, you know, administration, site locations, and just making sure that we're inviting and keeping all of those kids engaged in learning. At Jackman Road, we always say when the bell rings, it's time to learn. And kids get off the bus and they say, we're ready. So we just appreciate this program and all of your support. If anyone wants to see more data, we have it. We look at our FastBridge. We look at a lot of different sources. So we're just thrilled to be a part of the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Did I hear you say you were signing up to do a third year? Sorry.
That's what I heard.
Clearly, roll the tape back. Thank you again. Appreciate. Appreciate the presentation. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our human resource actions, and it looks like we have a couple. From Alex.
Thank you, Madam President. The first one I have tonight is a consideration to approve our Director of Transportation's retirement. That is Mrs. Carrie Dupree. She's been with us for about five and a half years, and she was able to help get us through COVID. That was a pretty big thing. And she's been a fantastic transportation director and has served our district students and staff very well. We wish her the absolute best in retirement. Her plans are to move to her lake house with her recently-retired husband and enjoy the pontoon and their family. So that's the first item tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we don't acknowledge it, then it doesn't happen?
Yeah, I know, right? Can we not?
All right, let's go ahead and get a motion for the consideration to approve the Director of Transportation Retirement, Carrie Dupree.
Madam President?
Megan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the retirement of the Director of Transportation, Carrie Dupree, as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Okay, any discussion? I appreciate, oh yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say how much I appreciated her during COVID. I know there were shortages of bus drivers, and they made monumental efforts to make sure that the bus was always there for my son every day. So just appreciate her.
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that it is a tough job, and everyone has an opinion on busing, and how fast the bus goes, and how slow the bus goes, and how close it gets to their house or doesn't come to their house. There's a lot of busing considerations. And I have, I've heard lots and lots of very good feedback and praise for the way Carrie is very professional in listening and handling things. So she will be missed. I have no doubt we'll find someone who will be fantastic, but she's done a really good job in some tough years. Go ahead, go ahead.
I will just say, I have an inside track, I've had an inside track at the bus scratch since I was 11 years old. And I can tell you, if anyone doesn't know, she is by far the best director in years. The morale has not always been high over there, I can guarantee you. She drove during, especially during the pandemic, she drove a bus almost every day. So she had to not only run that department, but also drive like a regular route almost every day because we were short. And that was part of our efforts to not have to cancel. We did have to cancel a few times routes, but not nearly as much as other districts. And it has a lot to do with her efforts with not only being behind the wheel herself, but recruiting and all of the work that she does there. So she will definitely be missed. And I'm kind of worried about anyone who might follow her because she's not going to be there anymore. But we'll get somebody good to replace her.
Thanks, Griffin. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Alex?
Thank you. And my next agenda item is consideration to approve the Bedford Paraprofessional Association Master Agreement. This is an MEA or NEA-affiliated group. There are about 41 paraprofessionals here in our district. And back in the summer, if you recall correctly, we had 19 positions open. We were able to fill most of those positions. And so this contract, you know, we put a lot of emphasis on trying to make this group whole, to get them right. We need to be competitive with this group. This is a group that really puts a lot of heart into their position. They come to work every day truly for the kids. So some of the highlights from the contract, this would be a three-year agreement. We updated some contractual language with bumping, moving around positions that would be really best for kids. The group, they initiated this as well, so we were mutually agreeing on this. The district's also going to pick up, like they have to take an assessment to earn their certification, and it's modest. It's $55, but they're paying that out of their own pocket. So we agreed that after you pass your test, we're going to reimburse you for that $55, something small that will go a long way. We also updated their evaluation forms. So they're, just like our teachers, they're evaluated annually by their principal. So we kind of aligned it to the new teacher evaluation model, which is based on a three-tiered rating system. So it does reflect them as instructional professionals. One other thing that we did is we converted their, so even as recently as a few years ago, these are positions, we would have some paraprofessionals that were three hours a day and others that were six. Well, now, most of them are six and a quarter hours per day, up to seven hours a day. So there's parity in the positions. So we've converted from going, from tracking their sick time hourly to days and half-days like we do with the rest of our staff. And finally, the last thing was we created a competitive hourly compensation schedule, which, this is a group that mid-contract, they were pretty low-paid, and we actually did a letter of agreement and increased their pay in the middle of their last contract, and this takes them up again. So the first year equates to about a 10% raise approximately, and then 3% after that. So around a 50 cent per hour. But this is a very deserving group, and I think that we've made some pretty nice changes for retention, and hopefully we won't have 19 physicians of the 41 open again. These are the steps that we have to take to be competitive, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, could I get a motion for the consideration to approve the Bedford Paraprofessional Association Master Agreement?
Madam President?
Gina?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Bedford Paraprofessional Association Master Agreement as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
I think I heard Dee. Any discussion on this one? Other than thanks, Alex, appreciate the work on this. This is a very deserving group, and I was glad to see the numbers and how it worked out to bring them up and make this a competitive role. I know in talking to our staff and talking to parents who have students impacted by paraprofessionals, I don't know how we would do it without them. So appreciate the work on that, yeah. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell is excused. Amy Drehorse?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes and the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we've reached our second public commentary. Anyone wishing to have any public commentary? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to our announcements. Sherri, are you here from the, for the, okay, go ahead.
The elementaries had an amazing start to the school year. JRE had their picture day today, and we've put all of the staff members when they were in elementary, we have a bulletin board, and the kids are going crazy trying to figure out who it is. And when we get our school pictures back this year, we're going to put them up next to our
That's awesome.
Pictures of the past. It's been a lot of fun. Jackman Road has their fun run October 9th. We've already raised over $10,000. Looking to always continue improving our playground and different areas. Our professional learning communities are in full swing. At all of the elementary schools, math coaching has started. It's going really well. We're trying to get extra coaching and support for some of our first-year teachers, just to give them the extra. All of our PTOs have a full year of activities planned. Go back to Jackman. We had our Minnie Mule's tailgate on September 20th and had over 250 people in attendance. It was our largest one yet. All of the buildings are starting their after-school tutoring next week. Monroe Road has a Mrs. Fields fundraiser starting up, and they have their book fair coming up as well the week of the 14th. Donuts with Grown-Ups on the 16th. They're having VIP Day on the 18th, and Trunk or Treat on the 29th. The junior high, the PTO, welcome back dances tomorrow night, so that'll be exciting for middle schoolers. Their building fundraiser is on the way. They'll be sending out FastBridge and M-step at the same time once they're completed. That is the same for elementaries. Ours will be going home, I believe, on October 11th. Secondary intervention team has been meeting to plan shared intervention time for third quarter. At the high school, the student council, under the leadership of Scott Dennis and Katie Wickenheiser, put together a fantastic homecoming week for our students. Congratulations to our homecoming king and queen, Eli Hinkelmann and Meadow Gomez, and they are looking forward to the trunk or treat on October 23rd. Fall sports are nearing the postseason. They have several teams doing exceptionally well. And the marching band will be performing at MSBOA at Flat Rock on October 7th. It's a great show this year and a large crowd. If the competition is always appreciated. And I can say, for the first time, I think since COVID, we are back to business as usual. It is like it never happened, and that's a really great thing. So we're just having a great year and can't wait to see what the rest of it brings.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate the update. And we do have our public relations. Jason? Oh yay, I didn't forget you this week. The master behind the curtain.
So just from my standpoint, I've been really busy. Everybody should have gotten by now the news and views that was put together, have made an effort to get in all the buildings, make sure we're covering as many things as possible. And this is before I've put out the all-call to all teachers to let me know what goes on in their buildings so that I can get there. Enjoyed working with Tom Martin on the mule sculpture, and to know that our reach. I'm kind of new to the whole insights of Facebook, but to know that over 50,000 people have seen just the one video that I posted on the mule is pretty impressive, and our level of engagement is up. So looking forward to continuing that. I know that the artist is going to be at Jackman Road in two weeks.
October 2nd.
October 2nd. But also is going to be going to the high school and doing some interactive things with the CT department there. So, and a great JRE graduate. So just trying to make all those connections, working hard and learning all the aspects of what it means to do this job for you guys, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Jason.
You're doing okay.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our executive cabinet. And Chrissy?
Things are going smoothly in the business office. We've been very busy with the auditors, but we are on top of all the requests, and it's going well. And that's about all we have going on, just audit.
I think that's a lot, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Chrissy. Alex?
Thank you. Yeah, we're off to a great start in HR. We currently only have one teaching position that's unfilled. It's a very difficult position to fill, secondary special education. We've had it posted for a few, actually over a month, and hopefully we'll continue to attract a candidate. Dr. French and I met with the secondary team to find creative ways to kind of get us through until we can find an applicant. We're hopeful at the semester break for the college students that maybe we can find a newly-certified special education teacher at that secondary level. We also had an audit from the Michigan State Police, a regularly-scheduled audit that we have every three years, just auditing our fingerprinting process for our employees, and we passed the fine colors on that. And so I'd like to thank Sally Lucarelli, give her a shout-out from my department, who does a fantastic job. We also have a few parapro positions open, and with the board's support and this new contract, maybe we can just get over that hump. I think we just have about four or five vacant positions. Maybe we'll be a little more attractive for filling those positions. And then, of course, the new Director of Transportation position is posted currently, and we'll keep that posted until October 11th, and then Dr. Schultz and I will analyze our current applicants and decide, you know, which direction to go there. I also want to give the board an update on our 27K grant. That is something that was a bit of a hybrid grant that we worked together between Chrissy's office and Dr. French's office and my office. And if, this was back in the spring, we applied, and then it kind of went dark in the state. And that grant is designed at giving teacher loan forgiveness. So when our teachers make their student loans, we can reimburse them up to $200 a month. We had 24 teachers in Bedford apply for the grant. There was a little bit of criteria. You had to work directly. So we had some staff members that were not teachers that didn't qualify, but 18 of our teachers ended up receiving monetary reimbursement. So I wanted to give a shout-out to Ivy Finley, who works between instruction and HR, as well as Shelley Hayes for all their hard work. And congratulations to our 18 teachers. They actually received a back pay lump sum payment that went all the way back to October of 2023, all grant-funded. So that's wonderful for our staff. And then kudos to the summer school team of, from Jackman Road. That's such a positive program. And I love that they added enrichment, because it's, if you drive through Bedford in the summertime, we have, from community ed, we have a Latchkey Summer Program, we have an Intervention and Enrichment Program, there is a Safety Town where our kindergartners are riding around and learning about safety. There's so much happening in Bedford during the summer. It's fantastic to see that learning doesn't stop in June. And the last thing I have is kudos to Jason Sanderson. He's doing such a fantastic job in his new position. He's really making us all look really good, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Dr. French?
Thank you. Thanks again for being here to tell us about summer school. It was great to hear about the program. And it's such a, I got to witness it firsthand this summer a bit. And especially the enrichment part, they invited me in to see some of those days, and they were having a great time and just learning, soaking up a whole lot of learning. Looking forward to our Reaching Higher program that I've described to you before, getting started again. Deckless Road will lead the way again in early October, starting that out for our fifth graders. And the big day in my department, Count Day, is next week. So I'm gearing up. I always threaten to go to hearken back to my elementary principal days and get out my count costume in celebration.
Perfect.
Haven't done that yet, but. Then also just the resolutions, lots of resolutions from the board in the month of October, just to give you an example. I think we'll attach an update in the board update tomorrow. But for example, October is bullying prevention month. So at Monroe Road Elementary, their student support coordinator, Tara Vancena, will be pushing into classrooms to discuss zones of regulation. And they had their PBIS kickoff assembly in September to encourage students to be their Bedford best. And they're going to hold monthly PBIS store days where students are able to turn in their mule box for tangible or intangible rewards. Classes are also celebrated every day by earning big tickets and winners. Who receive the most big tickets for the week are announced each Tuesday. Bedford, as you know, through our strategic plan, is also really a character counts district, where we highly value character. And that's reinforced throughout the year, really not just in October. So a couple examples from the schools on that, DRE continues to celebrate character every month by honoring a student that is nominated by their teacher. October is respect. Students have the opportunity to eat lunch with the principals. They're awarded a certificate and given mule bucks They're awarded a certificate and given mule bucks that they can spend on a prize. And I know all of our schools do so much throughout the year on our pillars of character. And then fire prevention week is coming up right at the beginning of October. So there's lots at all levels around that. The fire department brings out the fire trucks and an assembly on fire safety. And lots of practice, lots of practice of drills and getting safety down. So that's a sample and you'll get an update attached tomorrow. Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that update. Tom?
Yes, we went through the first three weeks of school and thankfully we haven't had anything exciting operations wise, so everything's been running pretty smoothly. Right now, we're gearing up for some preventative maintenance for our winter items. Getting caught up on work orders. This weekend, I will be attending the facilities operations directors conference up in Thompsonville up north. Just a taste of some of the classes that I'm going to go to, effective and efficient ways to keep your school healthy. Effective use of AI in facilities operations. District-wide room numbering system. I could have used that about a month ago, but I just want to look and make sure we're doing everything correct. And then of course, filter first legislation. We're through the first half of that where we've got all of our drinking fountains. I think we still got a few more to install yet, but I think we're ahead of the schedule. Right now, we're trying to apply for a grant to get some of that money back. And that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Tom. Feels weird not to be talking about renovations to auditoriums and fields and all of that.
Well, baseball, we got the concrete poured around the press box. That's done. We're getting ready to move the bleachers back in and then start on some renovations on the press box itself. So have that all ready for the season when it opens up in March.
Appreciate that. Yeah. And a thank you to your team for the, all the work supporting moving in the mule statue as well.
Yes.
I know your team.
And we're doing some work on adjustment of the lighting for that too, also.
Sounds good. Awesome. Thank you. Dr. Schultz?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank Jason and his work and all the building administration and directors as well for the news and views publication that came out. It is, it's by far the best that I've seen since I've been here. I've heard nothing but great things. We're actually placing them across the county now. We send them to all households, but we don't send them to businesses. So now we have some, we ordered some extras to place in businesses and lobbies of doctors' offices and just getting the word out on what the great things that are taking place here in Bedford. So that was a great rendition of the publication this year. The SRO positions that the board supported this evening, we are hoping they will begin mid-January. The sheriff's department has a bid process that takes place, I believe, in late November, December, where people can move around. And we're trying to make these positions as desirable as possible, which goes into having them do some traffic as well. We want officers that, you know, don't want, we don't want them, I hate to say this, but boring is good as an SRO, but we don't want them to feel like they can't get up, you know, get around, move around. So we try to make it like a hybrid SRO position, but having them on the campuses and around campuses all day. So we're hoping we attract some great deputies. The one thing I will say is that we have so many deputies in the county that live in our township. Both our current live in township and their students, their kids are students in our district. We have some more deputies that also have that. So I think that helps tremendously. They know a lot of the students already, familiar with the buildings. So I can't tell you how exciting about that. And I will, I will attend the county board meeting as well as the township board meeting once we get them on the agenda so that we can finalize that process. The legislature was busy the last two days. There was only one day they were going to be in session to vote before the upcoming November election and they're probably only going to be, depending on how the election goes, they'll be in a few more sessions before the end of the year. So they're winding down, but they did pass three bills that have an effect on public schools yesterday. Two of them were very positive. One of them I have concerns about. The two that were positive, the first one HB 5503 is a supplemental budget. I talked about this previously where they cut $300 million out of the state's mental health and school safety fund last year, which is 31AA. We still have funds this year which we are using for some items, but they gave us, instead of 300 million, they gave us 25 million. Well, they added 125 million yesterday with new legislation. So not quite to where they were, but they're about half where they were. So that will help us pay for SROs, pay for signs and other endeavors that we have. And the second one is a bill, it's HB 5803. And this bill is, it makes permanent the reduction in the district's requirement for OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. We have to pay a portion to this, back to the state annually. That portion was at about, just over 21%. And they've reduced it, this year's budget, down to about 15.4%, I believe. Well, they made that, they codified that in law yesterday and made it permanent. So it does save the district annually. Do you know the number? I mean, it's over probably $500,000 annually. So that is a big deal. We fought extremely hard through K-12 Alliance for that. And that group has been wonderful in getting some of these bills passed. And then the other piece that it had, teachers who were hired before 2015, who elected to have retirement healthcare, had to pay 3% of their gross pay towards their healthcare. And that's, this permanently eliminates that for those teachers as well. So our staff that have been here for quite some time will get a little reprieve there. So that, those are both great news. We fought hard for that. The last one is a literacy bill. They coined it as a dyslexia bill and it started off that way, but has since, like most bills do, has grown to a snowball of a lot of other items included. It does require, starting '27, '28, all K through third graders to be screened three times each year for dyslexia. There's currently not a tool for that, so they're working on that. In addition, it also adds some requirements for the literacy programs. It'll require some different components. Luckily, I believe, working with Dr. French and the pilot that we did last year and the adoption we made this year, does qualify for that. So we made sure that was one of the options when we approved that. So those programs are extremely expensive. Materials are expensive. We wanted to make sure we were in line if this were to happen and we were pretty sure it would eventually happen. So it became kind of a vendor bill, which it has some good points, but you know, it also brings up some things that, you know, people are doing well. Our students are doing, they're progressing really nicely with the program we have and anytime they do requirements for everyone across the board, you know, round hole, square peg, right? I mean, so hopefully it doesn't become too intrusive and we can continue making the growth that we have. That's it for me today.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate all those updates. And we'll start with the board. Dee?
I'd love to, I'm sorry. I, first of all, like to thank Sophie. I like having a little student here. And Jason, you're doing a great job. Thank you. I would really like to thank Sheri and Kim. I'm all for this summer school. I think it's wonderful. We, any, and that amount of kids, that's wonderful to help the ones that, so they don't get left behind. I would like to thank the paraprofessionals. That job is so close to the kids and for what they do, for the amount that we pay them. God bless them and I want to thank them. And second of all, I want to wish Carrie a happy retirement, even though I don't want her to go. And I want to tell Alex, don't hire anybody by the first name of Terry. And, sorry. And I really, even if the township doesn't go with us for these SROs, in this day and age, it's very important. Our children, the safety. I mean, we okay softball fields and fences and all this other stuff that's monetary. We can't say no to that. We just can't. It's worth every single penny. And I'd like to thank the whole community. If you look at the stuff that's been done, the community has really come forward for us. And as you all know, I only have two more months and I'd like to thank everybody. It's been wonderful. Not that I won't be at any more meetings probably, but I just want to thank everybody. I'm blessed. I'm blessed to live in this community and I'm blessed to sit with these people. And we are all blessed to have this cabinet that we have. And that's it. That's the most I've said in eight years. Thank you very much.
I'll disagree, but yes. Stay. Appreciate it.
Without the microphone going.
Gina? Thanks, Dee.
I think Dee said a lot of it, but I did want to highlight the parapros. I really want to thank them for their service and I'm so glad we're able to kind of nudge their pay up a little bit more. And Kim and Sheri, it's obvious you love what you do and how much fun you have. Makes me a little jealous that you get to have that much fun at work, but it shows and I know the kids have fun. And so we really appreciate all that. And I love this presentation every year, hearing about what happens in summer school. So always look forward to that one. And I think that's about it. Everybody have a great weekend.
Thanks, Gina. Amy?
Well, let's see. Alex, I want to thank you for your efforts with recruiting and also with all the collective bargaining that you've done. You just, you do a tremendous job. And the parapros, that's near and dear to my heart. My mom was a parapro at Jackman Road for 20 years. So she worked with Sheri when she was Ms. Thadman, a couple of years ago. Yeah. But anyway, so I'm happy to see that. Tom, I wanted to take a moment to publicly thank you and your staff because everyone sees all of the, everyone sees the mule and everyone sees the upgrades to the, to the facilities, but not everybody sees the eight hours spent trying to fix an old fridge in time for a football game. And even though they weren't successful because it was just that old, but you got, your guys work, you know, behind the scenes doing stuff and your girls all the time and they are really heroes of the districts. And they're all, everybody's pleasant and as helpful as they can be and it's just really refreshing. And I also wanted to say how exciting I think it is that we're making the connections with the mule, bringing it into the, into the schools. I saw what Jackman Road did with the, you know, making them, the kids made themselves out of foil and with him coming in and coming into the, into the high school. I can tell you from being in the concession stand on Friday night and, you know, we have Square, so we, our transactions are electronic and we served more than 18% more people Friday night than we did the previous Friday night. So the community is just so excited about that and the kids are so excited about that. So then take that and connect it in the classroom is just, you can't beat it. So thank you to Mr. Turpining again for, for giving us this incredible gift. And I'm thankful for the fall weather and I'm looking forward to Halloween and I'll see you all at trunk or treat on the 23rd. That's all I have.
Thanks, Amy. Griffin?
I would like to thank the student reps for being here. It's good to have them back. I know I mentioned this before, but that was my class's student council that started that program 19 years ago. I want to thank the sheriff for coming. Carl's right. I mean, there hasn't been a sheriff that I know of around here who is as involved with school safety as Troy is. Also, I'm appreciative of his just, in general transparency of putting stuff out there to the, to the community. And definitely looking forward to getting that deal wrapped up and so we can get those officers here. And last thing, I crossed a lot of stuff off. Last thing, the CTE advisory meeting, if you can go, the board members, please go. It is a lot of fun to see, I get invited every, by different teachers, every meeting, but I think Amy Bissell went last year. I went, or not last year, but in the spring. And you get to, Jackie will take you on a grand tour. You see every, every shop class, you look at all the projects they're doing, you go to the radio broadcast booth, she'll take you to the computer labs where they do the business classes and the coding classes. And she'll take you through the construction classes and you get to see everything. So I would highly recommend going to that if you're able to go. It's in your email.
Yeah, it's the ninth.
It's, I think it's next week.
No, two weeks, the ninth.
Two weeks. Yeah. That's it.
Thanks, Griffin. Megan?
Well, the thing about going last is that everybody said so many wonderful things. Thank you to Alex for your work on the contracts and hiring. So excited to hear about the summer school stuff. Good work, Jason, for all that you're doing. I did want to say thanks to Chrissy because we don't say thanks a whole lot in these to you, but I know you're working really hard on the audits. So thank you. But your, your work is very behind the scenes instead of out there like a lot of other work. So thank you for that and that's all I have to say.
Awesome. Thanks, Megan.
So if I didn't love summer school enough, the fact that you have community garden and then you guys utilize, I love that. I want to get on the email list for when you guys are cooking and harvesting for that. I would love to see, I just think, again, beyond academics, it's, you know, learning how to measure and cut and kind of fend for yourself. I had a panic moment when my youngest moved out. I was like, do you know how to cook? I don't know. Did I teach you how to cook? He's like, I'll be fine. So to hear that being introduced at the elementary level, I love that. So thank you again. And Dr. French, thank you for advocating for that as well. You mentioned the consent agenda. I also did want to point out, I think it's appropriate that the board approved to move forward with the SRO considering some of the consent agenda items. And I know, Dr. French, you mentioned bullying prevention, but character counts, national fire prevention, school safety week. I see a lot of opportunity with, with SROs in every building for them to get involved and have some really solid messages as a part of the work that's done on the consent agenda items, just kind of behind the scenes. So hopefully that can work out. The, I'm getting soaked now with a third generation of DRE students for cookies, the Otis Spunk Meyer cookies. So I know I've heard mention, some of the students are doing fundraisers. I know DRE right now, I mean, I can buy a scraper or I can buy cookies or pretzels. I mean, and it's all online. It's so incredibly easy to reach people now, so excited for them and I hope they do well. For, you know, Jason, I appreciate the perspective through pictures. I think that's one of the things that I look forward to seeing what's being posted because it's just such a different perspective that you wouldn't see as a parent or a teacher or a student. It's kind of through a different lens of what's going on in the district and the focus on school specifically, very intentional. That's just really cool. I think there's so many things going on. You can call it marketing, you can call it whatever, but between branding and sharing the message, I appreciate the work that he's done. And then lastly, I wanted to just appreciate the, and thank Jody, oh gosh, of course her mind.
Russ.
Russ, for hosting the meet the candidate at the library for the Board of Education. All the candidates were there. It was a lovely evening. It is recorded so that you can access it on Facebook if you have social media. Appreciate the candidates that are here in the audience who are a part of it. And then acknowledge our seated candidates, Gina, Amy and Megan. And appreciated, every candidate had an opportunity to introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their motivation. What I appreciated about each of the candidates was their, was their voice around the work that the board is doing now and that they all felt that the board was doing a fantastic job. They had hoped that the non-incumbents were looking for a way that they could support the board and the work that's being done. But I thought that was very nice and very deserved for the incumbents to get that acknowledgement from folks who are seeking to have a seat up here on the board as well. So appreciate the candidates, appreciate our incumbents and Jody, Russ for putting on that evening. Okay, with that being said, I do appreciate everyone, feels like we've got a nice size audience, who came today and if I could get a motion to adjourn.
Madam President?
Gina?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Dee. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose and the motion carries. Thank you. Time's 7:44.